Good evening. It's 7:00 PM, March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and I'd like to welcome everyone in the room and those who are participating online as I call to order this meeting of the Bellebrook Sugar Creek Board of Education for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. We value everyone's input and have made sure to dedicate a portion of this meeting to hear from you. We look forward to your comments during that time as it's indicated on the agenda. Mr. Liming, we please call the roll.
Mrs. Anderson?
Here.
Mrs. Dorn?
Here.
Mr. Kinsey?
Present.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Dr. Pryor?
Present.
All right, we have a quorum. If you're able, will you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, Treasurers' Report.
Could I get a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting dated February eighth?
So moved. Second.
Mrs. Dorn and then Mrs. Anderson? Questions, corrections? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
And Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Do I get a motion to approve the minutes from the February twenty-second meeting?
So moved. Second.
Mrs. Anderson and then Mrs. Dorn? Questions? Okay, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
I'm staying. I wasn't present, so.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
And Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
All right, motion passes.
Do I get a motion to approve the Treasurers' Report for the month ending February twenty-ninth?
So moved. Second.
Mrs. Dorn and then Dr. Pryor?
Just a few things. We currently only have about, we always like to talk about the state funding percentage of our revenue, and we're at about twenty-one percent right now, but that's a little lower than usual because we, our real estate tax, local real estate tax money is coming in, which is not state funding, so that makes the state percentage go down a little bit, but we're about twenty-one percent there, and we have a, as we've said many times, unusually large percentage of our revenue from local sources compared to other districts. Our percentage for salaries and wages out of our budget for expenditures is seventy-four percent, and we have, as I mentioned, about seventy-two percent for real estate taxes and revenue. The financial report details were included with agendas. Anyone have any questions about anything in that report?
What's, what's purchased services again?
It's, it's, the best way to say it is it's everything that we spend money on that is not salaries, wages, benefits, supplies, equipment. It's, it's services, like the, the big portion of it is the Green County ESC services, other things like utilities and repairs to the building and legal expenses and anything like that that's not a salary benefit supplier material.
Other questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor? Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Could I get a motion to approve the permanent appropriation amendments for the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year in the amount of ten thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents for federal grant allocation increases?
So moved. Second.
Mrs. Anderson and then Mrs. Dorn?
Really don't have anything to comment on that.
Pretty standard.
Yeah, standard, typical now.
Questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Thank you.
That takes us into correspondence. Anybody have anything that they would like to share for the good of the rest of the board? Okay, we'll move on then to reports to the board. I'd like to welcome Bridget Pritchard. Thank you so much for being here. We're going to hear all about special education.
Good evening. Bear with me. I thought that I would be able to look at the notes from my laptop, but now I have all these noisy papers that's going to bump into the mic, so I apologize. Because that's how it goes. All right. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Bridget Pritchard. I'm the Director of Special Education here at BSS. Today I'm going to provide a broad overview of special education, its purpose, the beneficiaries, and monitoring methods. I trust that our discussion will offer valuable insights this evening. The reason I say a broad overview is because really I could talk for a month straight about special ed and still not hit a fourth of the information that it pertains to. Okay, so before we start with what special ed is, we're going to start with what it is not. It is not any of these things solely in itself, all right? It is a collaborative partnership between parents and teachers, administrators, community members, board members. So it is not any of these things solely by itself. And I hadn't prepared to flip through the papers, like I said earlier. Okay, so special education embodies the fundamental belief and the inherent worth and potential of every individual, regardless of their abilities or challenges. It is grounded in the principle of inclusivity, recognizing that every student deserves equitable access to education and opportunities for growth. Special education emphasizes the importance of individualized supports and tailored interventions to address the unique needs of each learner. It embraces diversity, celebrates the richness of human variation, acknowledging that different students may require different approaches to learn and develop. At its core, special education reflects commitment to fostering a nurturing and supportive learning environment where all students can thrive, achieve their goals, and contribute meaningfully to society. It embodies beliefs that education is not merely about academics, but also about empowering individuals to lead fulfilling and purposeful lives regardless of any perceived limitations or challenges they may face. There's no way I could have memorized that, so I read it directly. So what is special education? It is specially designed instruction. Special education refers to the SDI that meets the unique needs of the students with disabilities and allows them to access and make progress in the general, general ed curriculum. It's not a one-size-fits-all approach, but rather an individual plan to address the student's strengths, needs, and learning styles. It can be provided in most environments. Special education services may include accommodations, modifications, assistive technology, specialized instruction, and related services such as speech therapy or occupational therapy, to name a few. Special education is meant to be portable and transferable to help close the learning gap of our students. Okay, so I mentioned specially designed instruction. In order to be eligible for special education services, a child must have a qualifying disability that adversely impacts their learning in the classroom. They must have a specific and individualized need related to their disability that causes them to not be able to access learning in the same way that their peers are able to. Specially designed instruction, or SDI, as you'll hear all the ISs call it, is the instruction that is created for a student based on their needs, whether that be social, emotional, functional, or academic. It allows for modifications or adaptations to the content being taught and allows access to the general ed curriculum. SDI is the focal point for which the entire IEP is wrapped around. It's derived from a child's measurable annual goals that's written inside the IEP, and I'll talk just a little bit about that in a minute. Great. So anytime you see an underline, that means that the presentation has been hyperlinked, and you guys can look further into the information to find out more. Specifically here, I have attached the Ohio, nope, not Ohio, the Department of Education and the Workforce, AKA ODE, their breakdown of what each disability and category is and how students will qualify for that. So qualifying disabilities, it says the eligibility criteria are determined by Ohio State law. All Ohio school districts are required to provide FAPE, which is a free and appropriate public education, to children with disabilities in accordance with IDEA. There are currently fourteen disabilities that Ohio recognizes for special education. I'm not going to read all fourteen, but these are how our students qualify here currently. So currently at BSS, there are four hundred and ninety-three preschool-age children participating in the special ed program. The rise in our enrollment is by twenty percent since two thousand and nineteen and has led to significant adjustments within our special ed program. Not only have we seen an increase in caseloads for our psychologists, our intervention specialists, and our related service providers, but it has also prompted us to implement additional support systems and resources to ensure individualized needs are met for each student in the most effective way. This surge in demand underscores the importance of ongoing professional development for our teachers, our admin, our related service personnel, and our director, and collaboration among our staff to maintain high-quality services for all the students that are enrolled.
Bridget, is that, is that percentage, is that kind of typical, I mean, throughout the U.S. as far as the, that's about fifteen percent, just do some quick math in my head here of our overall enrollment. Is that somewhat typical of throughout the country or?
Nothing's ever typical in special ed. It, it, it varies district to district, school to school. I think that for our population, that is a large number, having come from a, a different district, a bigger district. I think that that's a pretty heavy number, four fifteen.
Okay.
Any other questions? So this graph is a breakdown of our school-age students by disability category, and I know it's super small. I thought it would come out bigger. There are four categories that stand out more so than any other, and those are other health impaired, and those are students with chronic or acute health problems that affect their educational performance, so they may have things like asthma, diabetes, epilepsy, or ADHD, or a combination. There's speech and language, and that's for children who have articulation disorders or language delays. There is specific learning disabilities, and you'll hear that again in a couple of slides because we're working through that right now, and that is a neurodevelopmental condition characterized by persistent difficulties in acquiring and using academic skills, I took this straight from the definition, primarily students who are significantly below grade level. So that is alarming to have such a large number, especially if it's identifying students that should be on grade level, but they're not. And then there's autism. It's a complex developmental condition that typically appears during early childhood and affects communication, social interaction, and behavior sometimes, along with and affects communication, social interaction, and behavior sometimes, along with a lot of other things. Autism is really just a broad scope of so many other obstacles that our kids work with. And that is not to minimize any of the other disabilities that we have. We also have multiple disabilities, we have deafness, visual impairment, orthopedic impairment, we have students that have emotional disturbances, intellectual disabilities, and developmental disabilities. So right now, these are the disabilities that we service here in our district for our students. So just because a student qualifies for one disability under IDEA, which the law says in Ohio, we can only identify a kid for one disability, it doesn't mean that they don't have a compilation of other things going on. They may be dual diagnosed. I know there are several states, I taught in Kentucky, where they would have dual diagnosis for their students. Here, Ohio says you just get one, and we service you based on whatever other needs that you may manifest as a kid. Okay, so how do students get identified? Identifying students with disabilities begins when concerns arise from the parent or from the school regarding a student's progress in the gen ed classroom, usually gen ed curriculum. Before or during evaluation, the district is required to offer targeted interventions to support not only those kids whose parents may have requested it, but every student that may be struggling. Upon receiving the request for evaluation or initial for evaluation, the district then has 30 days to respond and acquire parent consent. So the district is going to reach back out to the parent and/or guardian and let them know, yes, we do agree with you, we suspect the child may have a disability, or no, you know, we've provided interventions and interventions are working, so I think we're good to go. After reviewing the data, the ETR team determines that special education eligibility is going to be applied for the student, and then an initial IEP is developed by the IEP team, and we'll talk about that in a few minutes. Subsequently, within 30 days, the evaluation team, along with the parent, identifies the eligibility category, and all that means is, within 30 days, everyone on the ETR team gets together and they decide what disability best fits the kid based on the needs and the data that was collected. Once that is done, then the parent agrees or disagrees, and now it is time to draft the initial IEP, and that consists of another team with different team members that are kind of still the same team members. If the evaluation concludes that a child does not meet criteria for special education, does not qualify for a disability, then that student just simply returns to the gen ed curriculum. Okay, so we mentioned IEP, so what is an IEP? IEP stands for Individual Education Plan or Program, and it is tailored for the student that has the disability, and it outlines the supports that they need specifically to compete and progress and succeed in the general education classroom. It's developed in collaboration by a team that includes the parents, the gen ed teachers, intervention specialists, and a district representative. There are related service personnels that may show up to a meeting, but they are not required team members, and that's if the student qualifies for a related service. All team members have equal rights, however, the district representative has the authority to make any final decisions when the team is unable to come to a consensus. Information from the evaluation team report is then prioritized based on what the student needs to do first, and what is most significant, and then an IEP is drafted in that regard. It's reviewed and updated annually using progress monitoring data, so our ISs send home progress reports quarterly, and it's just the outline of what the goals are, the student's objectives, and how well they're progressing towards meeting those goals. The IEP includes the student's current academic, functional, and social/emotional levels, learning goals, instruction methods, and transitions to independent living goals. It is a living document that can be amended and revised at any time based on any changes in relation to progress or student regression. Amendments and revisions within the IEP should come from the documented data that the team collects. So within the IEP, there's something called the LRE, and that is the least restrictive environment. I like to say least restrictive services. I believe that special education is a service, and it shouldn't be a location. It shouldn't be a place where kids are put, but it should be a service that the team has collaborated on in order to support the needs of a student. IDEA mandates that children with disabilities receive education in the least restrictive environment. This means that ensuring access to general education classes and curriculum whenever possible. So what that means is, in my triangle right here, IDEA states that when a kid is evaluated and identified for services, then they have rights to the most or the least restrictive environment first, right? As long as it's feasible. So that would be this bottom bar right here, that's the general education classroom. As supports and interventions are put in place and data is collected, if necessary, those environments and those services become more restrictive. So the more restrictive the service, then the environment may have to change depending on what's being provided to the student. So the IEP team must first consider placing the student in a gen ed class and provide necessary modifications and aids for satisfactory education and progress. If the team determines the gen ed classroom isn't suitable, other placement options and service models outside of it to provide a free and appropriate public education are explored by the entire IEP team. These options constitute the continuum of alternate placements, or it's called a continuum of services, and that's what that model is, and it is required by law. So it is required that the IEP team look at all models of service and all environments to make sure that they are providing FAPE to the child.
Is the parent, where do the parents fall in this team process? Do they get an input on the LRE, is it strictly like the district personnel?
That's a great question, and it depends on what the situation is. The parent is a equal team member. They are the expert on the child. If it is an initial IEP, then it is a team decision, and we will start in the general education classroom. If the team decides from that initial evaluation, that initial IEP meeting, that the child needs a resource room, or a self-contained classroom, or a combination of two or three of those things, then that is a stay-put. You're going to make me go real deep. If it is decided, if this is an annual review, so the kid already has an IEP, and it was decided that the gen ed classroom was the best place, and data is collected, and now the team is thinking, well, they're not progressing towards meeting their goals, they may be failing in classes, the instruction or the interventions are not working, and they want to change the LRE, then they need parental consent unless it is a behavior situation. Yep?
Might I ask?
Please.
How often will students move up and down, is that when an IEP is updated?
Ideally, we would like to be perfect and get it right the first time. That always happens, never. So annually, it could happen annually. Sometimes the child stays in the services or the environment their whole career of an IEP, so it really is determined by need and data and team input. So it could stay for a week, they could stay for 12 years. So it depends on the team and what their goal is.
Is it ever more often than IEP, like annualized, like?
Yeah, it could be whenever the parent requests a meeting. Good questions. Now I've got to flip back and forth, this is great. Okay, so there is a caveat. If the general education classroom has to be modified, so say we stick a kid in the gen ed classroom, and that curriculum has to be modified and accommodated and tailored to the extent that the content is no longer recognizable, and the student is not engaged, and they're not making progress, and they're not participating meaningfully with their peers, then the team may want to consider other service models and placement options. And I say that because there's a term called invisible walls, where even though a child is in a gen ed classroom, they may be excluded from what's really going on in the entire environment, right? So that's called mainstreaming, and sometimes we mix that with inclusivity. It's not the same thing. If the child isn't getting the education, it's not meaningful to them, and we no longer recognize the curriculum that's being taught, and it doesn't look the same as what their peers are getting, then that is called invisible walls. And the IEP team, it's really their responsibility to reconvene and point that out to the parent based on data and make decisions. Now, to go back to Mrs. Anderson's point, the parent has control at that point because they're in the gen ed classroom, and all we can do is state what's going on and allow the parent to consent or revoke what's being offered. I didn't think it was going to take this long. So, exiting services. Exiting services means that the special ed has ended. It is not a time to mourn, it's not sad, it should be a time of celebration, because what that means is, our kids are making progress, they're doing great, they don't need any services, they don't need special attention, they are independent. So, just keep that in mind. I know it's sad to remove services. As a parent, I can't imagine not coddling and helping my kids the way that I do, it makes me sad every time they show their independence for me. So, just being mindful that if an IEP team recommends exiting a service or exiting from special education, if they've done their due diligence, that should be a time to celebrate the student. So special education services may end, and that's referred to as exiting, and that can happen for various reasons. The parents must always be informed in all cases where the services are going to be terminated, and that is the recommendation of the IEP team. This recommendation requires updated testing, so when a kid is taken off services, they have to reevaluate to a certain extent, depending on what services is being removed, and the team must convene or reconvene to discuss the options. So reasons for ending services include student achieving their IEP goals, yay, where the disability no longer impacts their education, students no longer meeting disability criteria, so it's saying that whatever disability we identified, it's not there anymore, and that is a possibility. The parent requests that their kid be removed from special education, which they have every right, and the IEP team does not have to consent to that. Graduation is pretty simple, the kid has matriculated out, and they are no longer a part of BSS, and then if the student ages out. So services will end on the day before, I always get this wrong, the student's 22nd birthday, so they can go to school until they're 22.9, 21.9. Okay, so here's the juicy stuff. Who monitors, who monitors special education? So now that we've dipped our tiny toe right at the tip into the ocean of special education, we're going to talk about our profiles and our ratings. Here we go. So the special ed profile, established under IDEA in 2004, assesses services and outcomes for students with disabilities. Each year, districts across Ohio receive a profile that summarizes progress and meeting specific goals for our students. It helps districts to use academic data to enhance special education services within the district. So the profile for the 2023-2024 is primarily based on data that's submitted by districts to the Education Management Information System, or EMIS, for the previous year. So all of our ratings will come out a year in the rears. So Ohio has indicators, and these indicators are a part of the profile, and the indicators are attached to six essential questions that Ohio created based on the IDEA model. The indicators are organized to help guide continuous improvement in the areas of special education, and they want to know by these six questions. One, how well are our students prepared for kindergarten? How are students are performing in school? If our students are included in regular education classes? How ready are students are for life after high school? What services are students get if they have disabilities? And if the services that we provide are fair and equitable? So these questions help schools use data to make services better for kids with disabilities. The special education profile tells districts how well they're doing on important things that are outlined from IDEA. So here's what we were waiting for, our ratings, and again, if you click on our ratings, it's hyperlinked, and also within the presentation, every year that's highlighted in blue, I've included the full ratings report and profile for you to look at. If there's a hyperlink here in blue, then it breaks down what the indicator is specifically, and it lets you know exactly what's being measured. So that's there for you. At the top, here are the six questions, this is actually what the profile will start with. So let's talk about this. The special education ratings are released annually in two phases. You have a winter phase, usually around October, and then you have a phase that comes out in May. This year, they kind of cheated, and they released something in January, but it wasn't the full report, it was the 23, 22, 23, and that's why there's blank spaces, because all the ratings haven't been released yet. So, the Department of Education Workforce offers opportunities to correct what's in red by aligning processes with state requirements. Oh, I forgot to break down, I'm sure you can guess what red means. Green means we're good to go. Blue means that we haven't been rated yet, and orange is a data reporting error that the state allows us to submit corrections for. They just change it orange just to punish us and let us know that we messed up right there a little bit. So overall, we consistently meet our indicators, so we're doing a pretty good job. The graduation indicator, the dropout, our discipline, our least restrictive environment, our preschool, and our child fine are all consistently green. Currently, with inflection, we're addressing concerns of over-identification of students with specific learning disabilities, so that's the identified category. So we're working in partnership with the Department of Education and Workforce and our State Support Team 10 for our disproportionate indicators 9 and 10, so that's what that's called when we over-identify in a certain area. Those are indicators, where'd it go? Nine and 10, and if you look in the 20, 223 column, there's two red marks in a row, so that's what we're working with right now. So there are factors that we can't control that often affect our profile and our ratings. So these include resources- resources, transient students, biases, discipline practices, socioeconomic factors, and advocate and parent involvement. So, these are things that, as hard as we try, sometimes they just affect us negatively as a district and as a team. So, for instance, if you look at the top row, which is the alternate assessment, and I don't know why they didn't give that one a number, but they didn't, you will see that we were consistently red from two thousand and sixteen until two thousand and twenty-one. And that that is due to no fault of our own, I'm gonna be honest. So, in two thousand and nineteen, Ohio implemented new guidance establishing a one percent threshold testing students with the most severe and significant disabilities. Sometimes, students move into our district. Sometimes, we're required to provide certain services to them based on their needs, and it causes those ratios just to go up. And if we're doing our work with fidelity, there's nothing that we can do for that except take the red for it and, you know, hope for the best the next year. So, this is one of those instances where we have kids that have significant disabilities that really need to be tested in a specific way. And so, we did. So, the good thing is, in twenty-two, twenty-three, we were able to meet that indicator and still service our kids within reason to the best of our ability.
Bridgette, I'm not fully recalling how you described that category.
Yep.
When it says alternate assessment, are we talking about how our students are assessed and tested? Or are you talking about, like, special ed assessment, i.e. ETR?
Good question. Yep. Alternate assessment is the actual name. It's the AESCD test, and it is, it's just an alternate state test. So, in April, when all our kids are taking their regular assessment, there is an alternate assessment that's reserved for kids with severe and significant disabilities that they'll be tested on.
Okay, and so, not meeting that means that we didn't get all of those kids tested? Or we couldn't test them for their IEP? Or couldn't test them?
Not meeting it means that we tested everyone, but we got punished for going over the one percent that Ohio allotted us.
One percent?
Of our special ed population of students, so they I'd have to read it word for word to you, but they give us a one percent threshold that they allow us to have as far as students being alternately assessed. And because our population, our percentage was more than that, then they gave us a red, not a met. So, they want
They only want only, ninety-nine percent of our students need to take the standard assessment, and only one percent should be allowed to take the alternate.
You can say it that way.
Even though we have four hundred kids that
Yep.
are giving special ed services.
Yep.
Am I missing or something? Does that sound like a good thing? It sounds like we're testing more than we should.
Sounds like we did the right thing. The state just
I'm glad you see it.
So, it sounds like we're over serving in that category?
We are giving students what they need.
Yes. Which is kind of funny.
Yep.
Okay.
So, if you didn't hear my voice, it kinda dipped when we had the green for twenty-two, twenty-three because it's, it is what it is. Like, we don't wanna Well, it's a drop down. I can turn it green if you want.
Ms. Bridgette, I would think this is accurate. I think historically, the reason why the state or maybe the feds do that is that they don't want students to, hey, let's put them on alternate assessment. That means they aren't gonna take the regular test, and they aren't gonna be in that, they aren't gonna be in our scores for a regular test. Let's put them on the alternate assessment so they don't ding us on the regular test. And I think that's why the one percent is there. So, people, so school districts don't put
Gain the system.
Gain the system on a regular test. So, that's why that one percent is there. And so, I don't know why one percent. I think one percent at one point, I don't know.
That's perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's historically, the meaning of the context for the reason behind why that is there. One percent on the white one percent, but
They vote on it. We vote on it. We all do. So, there are certain times where Ohio will solicit opinions based on laws that they're gonna change, so that'd be a good time to
I only know what I've heard in the last two minutes, but when I hear the students looking, that sounds like a good thing.
We try our best. Don't know what I was saying. Okay, indicator three. Right here, there are various subparts. So, this pertains to reading and math participation rates for state testing across the board, alternate and regular state testing for kids with disabilities. So, this indicates the number of students on the IEP who should be state-tested versus the number of students who actually were tested. So, a red rating signifies a higher number of children who are opted out of testing by their guardian, which surpasses the allotted threshold that Ohio gave us. Currently, there is no action that our district can take, and there's no action required. However, this area warrants close monitoring with ongoing efforts to educate and encourage parents about the advantages of their child participating in our state tests. Again, these factors are out of our control, and they do negatively impact our ratings, which is not the most important thing, obviously. But it does show up. It doesn't look as pretty. So, there are factors that are within our scope of control to help our profile and our ratings, and they include professional development on Ohio indicators and ratings, response to intervention offered by our district, data monitoring and analysis of special education documents, family engagement, that would be great, using the correct testing tools, discipline practices and documentation, reporting the correct data to EMIS, and continuing to service our students based on what's reasonable and proportionate. Finally, there are some blanks, which I've already talked about, so I'm gonna skip this line. So, think of it this way. Ratings are not a report card. That's not why, that's not why this is here. And red is not daunting because it's not our grade. Think of their profile as a GPS. Okay, it shows our current position, where we've been in the past, and it guides us back on course towards what is necessary for our students. So, that's why there are no scores. There are no grades.
Bridgette, how much is the new dyslexia legislation and requirement impacting the larger bar that we saw earlier in that sideways bar graph about the learning disabilities? Is that, I've gotta think that that's the fact that every kid's getting tested for dyslexia, and am I right in saying that dyslexia is now considered a learning disability that requires special education? Is that really changing our numbers and changing ambulance orders?
Not officially. That would be the idea, and that was the scuttlebutt early on when this happened. It hasn't really negatively impacted our district. We haven't had that many.
The dyslexia screener
Please.
Have given that as required for P three. The dyslexia screener does not diagnose, and we are not required to diagnose, and we're not diagnosing. But if kids are flagged on the screener, it just indicates that they show tendencies that may be characteristics of students who may show signs of dyslexia tendencies. So, the recommendation is to provide reading intervention based on whatever those skill deficits are. Just like any other student.
And we alert the parent, and if a parent wants to go get further evaluation for actual diagnosis, then they can, and then we deal with it.
You do the intervention as usual, and a second screen if they're not showing progress.
So, just remember that dyslexia is not one of the big fourteen, so it would fall under another category, probably OHI.
It doesn't fall under learning disability?
It's a team decision, but possibly. Right.
And then, that over-identifying, have we looked at? Are we just over-identifying because we're high? I'm not asking you to give a definitive, but we have really engaged parents who
It's a
get their kids checked out and really are, you know,
So, it's in this
Notice?
It's in the specific learning disability category, and it is a culmination of so many things. Us doing the right thing, kids moving in with the diagnosis. And it was in a specific category of student. So, we are looking at it. I'm working with Ohio, and I have a SST ten rep that I'm meeting with currently. It's not anything that we can do. It's a more, more of a long-term process because we can't undiagnose a kid, and we can't take them off or remove services if that's something that they really need. So, it's, it's another one of those things where you don't know when you're in trouble until you get in trouble. Like, you think you're going along, and you're identifying, and you're providing services, and then you find out, oh, you've gone too far. Like, you've reached the ceiling and you surpassed, so.
But that's just based on numbers. Are they looking at an actual evaluation and saying, you called that this, but it shouldn't have been?
Yes.
They are. So, they're not just saying you have more than the average, or?
Yes. Yes, to all of those.
Okay.
So, they are looking at records.
More than the average. Maybe there's something in the water. You know, who knows, right? Like
Well, our population is so small. In certain demographics, we, we do have more identified because our, our population of student is so small. So, we have to keep all that into consideration. And yes, Ohio does look at the ETR records. I've found out recently, more so than not, what they're looking for is compliance as opposed to servicing need. So, it's catch twenty-two. Yep. They're on our team, but they, they do help. They're very helpful. So, do you have any other questions?
You said something that jumped out at me. It's not the things we can't control, and one of the things you said was resources. And are we talking about, like, money and how many teachers we have resources? Are we talking about some other kind of resources that we truly can't control?
Yeah.
Or like, you can't control those resources. We can control those resources. So, are we talking about other resources?
Yes.
Yes, other resources?
Yes, everything.
Okay. All right.
You can never have enough resources for special ed.
Like, I mean, it might be hard, and we might be running out of money and things, but we can.
It's not just money. It's holistically, it's everything. It's new behaviors manifest, and now we need new interventions. Or learning looks different, so now we have to address that with specific services. It's just all around. You can never have enough resources in special education because there's always something new coming. Kids always show up looking different, acting different.
Picking back on the resources question, like, is, I know we, like, calculate per student spending. And this might be a Mr. Linning question, but is there a way, like, when a special ed student comes to our district, they come with, I mean, they do, the state does provide extra funding, is that, is that accurate? Most, sometimes?
That is the EMIS question. I know that we get an allotted amount of money, and when they come from one district to another, that amount follows the kid.
Right. Is there a way that parents are able, or accountability for those funds? Like, to make sure student A with, say, autism comes in, that those student funds that were intended for student A are spent on student A? Is there a way we audit that or track that?
I don't know. That's the intent. That, that, that's allocable to that kid. It's just, the district has provided extra resources because they're
But not, but not necessarily per IEP.
I don't think.
Mr. Linning?
Nope.
If he says no.
Depends on the disability, or whatever the term is.
And that would be one of those underfunded mandates that are from the federal level that probably would, I'm gonna make a best estimate, we'd probably get fifteen to twenty percent of funding of what it really costs to educate students that maybe need some extra help and resources. And so, that other eighty percent or whatever, that, again, that's a round number. That's a guesstimate. That, that would come from, from us, of, of, from the local level. Yeah. It's one of those underfunded mandates.
And I just wanna say, I heard you say best. Yes, of course, we would love it to be our best. Law says reasonable and appropriate, so just wanna make sure we all understand that. So, what can we do? Early intervention initiatives. We can develop programs for early identification in support of developmental delays and learning challenges before kids enter school and before they're put on IEP. There's response to intervention, implementing a tiered support system like RTI or MTSS to assist all students, potentially reducing special education referrals, ongoing educator training, providing continuous training for teachers on effective methods, diverse learning needs, and early identification of difficulties. The collaborative approach, fostering teamwork among educators, parents, administrators, and support staff to address student needs collectively. The universal design for learning. We can apply UDL principles to create inclusive learning environments accessible to all students. PBIS, positive behavior interventions and supports. We can embrace this framework to promote positive behavior and prevent challenges, reducing the need for behavior-related special education services. And then, family and community education. We can engage families and community members in supporting students with disabilities, providing resources and assistance as needed. So, I will say this. I saved it for last, and I wholeheartedly believe this, and I have to be completely honest. Not every issue is a special education issue, and not every differently-able child will qualify for special ed services.
I knew you did. No, I'm not gonna ask you to respond to now, but I have one more thing that I was hoping to see. I really would love to see the, of a more of a PDF, a number of report cards, special ed proportion of the report card. Now, I've got
Files?
If we've Yeah, where we actually are graded on how we serve kids. And then, I'd love to see some caseloads. We're constantly being asked to, we're in higher additional classes or paras or individuals in general.
Yeah.
And I think us understanding the individual, not, not person-by-person caseload, but average caseload and workload and how that compares to years prior versus how that compares to other districts.
Sure.
That would be helpful when we have to make those decisions. Because it's very hard to sit in a position where you have to make decisions about money, and even sometimes you do have to say no. But it's really hard to say, but, but these disabled children need an extra person without, without the, the data.
I gotcha. So, the report card and the indicators, ratings, that will take a long time. I have it if you want more information.
I just, I just want, I particularly, and I'm not the rest of you, I really want to learn more about how the state thinks we're doing on special ed. Because we don't have a lot of, it's very hard to evaluate special ed because all of these kids are individuals and are different. And it's hard to parent kids with disabilities because you don't have anything to compare them to, you know.
Yeah.
So,
Did you get a copy of the presentation? Have you, no?
This, oh, that was the last thing I was gonna ask you. This presentation? Yes, but we, we received it as a PDF. So, all the links you were pointing out, don't, don't, don't take it right. They're a PDF, so if we could get a live copy of the presentation, that would be helpful.
So, then, start with all the indicators that were in the column, and then look at all the years. And I attached a comprehensive overview of everything inside of that year. You can look at the whole thing. And then, when you have questions, then that's when I would be able to help. I can't. And as far as caseloads, I can tell you that right now. Elementary ISs can go up to sixteen children. They can write up
This is the max, or this is where we're at?
This is the max.
Okay, I wanna know where we're at.
Oh, okay.
Like, I don't wanna be at
We're at sixteen.
Case load, state minimum service. I wanna know where we're, where we're at, and how we're doing, and maybe in comparison. That's a good, that's good to know.
So, do you wanna know by a staff member or just overview of?
I don't need to know by staff member, but it helps me to know, like, hey, three years ago, we had this many kids on IEPs, and we had this many staff members, and so, this was like an average caseload. But now, we have more, and we have the same number of teachers, so the caseload's way bigger. Or maybe the caseload's small. I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
So, to be able to look at it as a trend and in comparison to how many students or something.
Okay.
It would be helpful.
On there, but the slide, you go back to that slide, right at the beginning there, of the solve increase in the number of special ed students. So, again, if you, you know, just in general terms, those increase in numbers there. are the reasons why, like for next year, we're increasing an intervention specialist in middle school because our numbers continue to grow. We've added at least two or three the past couple of years because you see those increases in caseloads. As we're looking at the number that we're at, fourteen, fifteen, you know, back to sixty or thirteen, we're, we're there. And so we need to add an extra intervention specialist. So we definitely get to that information. But in general terms, that's why.
Yeah, I understand there should be an increase, but I, like, I haven't been on the board since twenty nineteen and I certainly can't add up in my head the number of times we have retired or someone has resigned or we have hired an intervention specialist to know, like, how many have we added or maybe subtracted or. So to be able to compare those numbers, I mean, support staff as well, like are, are we good on ISs? But we used to have way more paras than we, than we do now. I think that was.
Continue to grow. Especially assistance as the numbers continue to grow and those, those goals are harder to find.
I know.
They're harder to find.
It's a, it's a difficult job. I know it's hard to. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Also to add, but you know, the report card information, so again, it depends on what we, you get that information, no problem. But if our goal for special ed students is how they're scoring on a state test once a year, then that report card data of how they score, then that's important. And obviously that's one piece of the puzzle. So the report card gives you how are, how are all of our students, including special ed students, performing on this once, or these state tests once a year.
The report card takes into account a lot of things. And I know we have, we've done deep dives in the past into the gifted population and I would like to provide the same level of scrutiny to and just in general information, learning to us and to the community about special ed. Right. It's super helpful to see, like, even though those are red, like that top category is red, we still, we're dealing with these ideal investment students even though it is red. That was good information to have. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We move next into our open communication period. Have they signed up? All right.
Hey, we have nobody tonight for our open communication period, so we will move into the superintendent's report.
So new business, six, we're gonna do consent agenda, certificate of license of one resignation leave of absence, something on duty. That's A, six A. Six B, support staff and fund of resignation leave of absence. And then six C, substitute appointment consent agenda for six A, B, and C.
Sub move.
Mrs. Dorn, then Dr. Pryor.
And just to point out, one, she's on here is Mr. Whalen, our assistant principal at high school. It's now the new principal at senior high school. So congratulations to him. However, he will be, he will be missed and done a fantastic job, job the year. He's been here and actually appropriately enough, one year, he was our interim special ed director also.
So that was effective end of the school year.
No, that's effective end of the school year. He'll be the principal of Xenia.
Will be.
Hopefully my mic out, hopefully my teacher voice kinda went, no, it didn't. Okay, I'm sorry.
So if we vote no, he can't do the job.
It's one of those things.
So again, to reiterate there, since my mic wasn't on, Mr. Whalen, new principal of Xenia High School and assistant principal here, effective end of the school year. And so congrats to him, but he will, he'll be missed. He's on ice truck.
All right. So tonight's consent agenda, six A, six B, six C. It has been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Okay. Mr. Liming, please call the roll on tonight's consent agenda.
Dr. Pryor?
Yeah.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
And Mr. Price?
Yes.
Take us to seven.
Summer athletic camps. And you will see all of them there. Softball, youth, football, soccer, cross-country girls, and boys' basketball and cheerleading youth camp.
Fair motion?
Sub move. Second.
Mrs. Anderson and then Mrs. Dorn.
And there were some on last month's board agenda also. And so these are for the 2024 summer athletic camps.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yeah.
All right. Out of state travel for actually for Mrs. Pritchard, Special Education Director to attend the National Institute on Legal Issues of Educating Individuals with Disabilities and May fifth to the eighth in Savannah, Georgia.
Is there a motion?
Sub move.
Mrs. Dorn and then Mrs. Anderson.
Okay. So Mrs. Pritchard, continue to keep up on special education law and collaborate and network with other folks in the special education.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
All right. The next is our Green County ESC service agreement for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So recommend approval of the service agreement with the Green County Educational Service for supplemental services during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year at $2.9 million.
Sub move. Second.
Dr. Pryor and then Mrs. Anderson.
And so our cost continued to go up, just like everybody else's cost. We, the main cost of our agreement with them is our preschool is run through Green County Educational Services Center, even though it's our students, the ESC runs that. Also OT, PT, and speech. Those days continue to increase also for, to meet the needs of our students. We're also actually adding a day, another day of mental health services from them for next year. We added two this school year. We're adding one more day next year. And this is ending up a little, and last year ended up just a little bit over $3 million. So we try to get a really good estimate of what it is, but we get fairly close.
I know there's been a lot of talk and quite a few asks for additional mental health resources. That might make people feel a little bit better. The other thing I mentioned is that I know it is a cost savings for us to use them, right?
Yep.
If we were to fully staff and do this in-house, it would be much more expensive, correct?
Yep. So the ESC is, is an organization, you're able to pool their services. For example, we'll have seven days of mental health services next year. And so to get somebody that's a person and a half, so they pool resources that that person then works in other school districts. So they do that with OT, PT, and speech, and they're able to pull those resources together to service districts in the county.
Big price tag, but cost savings. Okay. It has been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Mr. Liming, please call the roll on our agreement with the ESC.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yeah.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Next is a special meeting date. So I don't know how the best way to do this, so the, some options. In June for, with representative from K-12 consulting to discuss the upcoming treasurer CFO search since Mr. Liming is retiring again at the end of the calendar year here. So that's a, using that company to, to look for our new treasurer. So I don't know how we wanna, we wanna discuss maybe the dates are and then make the actual recommendation, resolution, is that how we actually?
Sure.
So we aren't, I wanna make Mr. Liming's life easier of not doing a amendment and doing all that. Yeah, you'll retire tonight. Make too many amendments and whatever else to that. So the dates that are possibilities are June tenth, eleventh, twenty-fourth, and twenty-fifth to have a special meeting date where we then would go back into executive session during that time. In the evening, yes. It could be as early as five. It could be six, could be seven, could be five thirty, six thirty, six fifteen, whatever we would like to do. But in the evening, yes.
Call them straightforward for me.
Same here.
I can do any day but the tenth. It is the graduation ceremony for. It might be a place to pass the time. But any of, I'll be.
Okay.
For me, I just wanna know, cause my work schedule depends on how I pop up trips. So right now, I think all those are good, but.
Is it right now, they're all good?
All of them can be bad. That would work.
And you, all of them work for me. Do we wanna do the? Well, the week, or the eleventh is, we have a board meeting that week, I believe. So do we want two in a week? Well, actually, the other one, we have another one in that week too. So pick your poison, either beginning of the month or the end of the month, two, two meetings.
I say beginning of the month.
Eleven?
Eleven?
Yeah.
Okay. Can I make a motion that we add a special meeting on June eleventh with the purpose of talking with the search firm?
We want that at the Belbert Middle School and at what time?
Do I do a little bit earlier?
At the board office?
I, and I feel like I think this, this first one is kind of an informational.
Yes.
So I, I don't think it would be super long or, but do we wanna say, I don't, I don't know if people's.
I'd like to recommend at the board office. The board office would be mostly maybe I feel like they're gonna have a presentation that may require a party board.
Objections? Okay. Sounds good.
At what time?
This is?
Six o'clock.
Education Center? Six o'clock? Eighteen hundred.
Six PM?
And the reason we can't do a special meeting following one of our meetings is that the representative from K-12 is also a treasurer and they have the board meetings exact same nights we do.
Yeah. That's why we, that's why we have to pick a different night.
Right.
Okay. So I made a motion. Did anybody second?
Second.
Okay. Mrs. Anderson seconded. Good there, Mr. Liming? All right, cool. You captured what we need?
Yep.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yeah.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yeah.
And Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
All right. Donation recommended acceptance of donation from Lal Zama in the amount of $400 to Stephen Bell Elementary Principal's fund.
Sub move. Second.
Mrs. Dorn, Mrs. Anderson. Super generous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Please call the roll.
Dr. Pryor?
Yeah.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yeah.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes, with gratitude.
And Mr. Price?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We have a draft. This, these are items for information and discussion. So this is a first read on the draft for the 2025-26 school calendar, so about next year, the year after. So admin reps had worked on a couple of options and then SEA had a draft of their option. And so when we put all the parameters again in place of, you know, ending the first semester before the, before winter break, ending second semester, end of the school year before Memorial Day, and trying to keep things as somewhat as even as possible in each quarter and so forth, we kinda come up with the same kind of schedule. And actually, we, you know, the first draft, first read here, but this is essentially the proposal that SEA had made to us. There, there was some discussion at the beginning of opening day of when to have that teacher work day. But besides that, this is the exact calendar that SEA had and ours was just a day off at the beginning or the end. So they were beyond one, one or two days. They were exactly the same anyway. So any discussion on, on that, this will bring that back for the, a final or a second read and approval at the next board meeting.
Remind me, this looks pretty close to this current year.
Yep. They're all pretty much the, the same. When we put all those parameters in place, they look eerily the same. Yep.
Very good.
I have a question. Is it all possible to get the Monday after Easter off? Tons of people go out of town for Easter and people who celebrate Easter, you celebrate on Sunday. I mean, and so traveling back on Sunday is really difficult. So it'd be really great to have Monday as a sixth off, if at all possible.
Um.
I think it's been done in the past.
Yeah, the, the, again, the, the challenge with, with that is then either we have to start the school year with a staff first day on a Friday, or we have to have the last day for staff after Memorial Day.
I think for most schools, it's either Easter Monday or Good Friday.
And I'm not, and this is, we're off on?
April third.
April third is. That Good Friday this year? Or this is two years from now.
All I know is probably 200 cooks were in this kitchen for, for this.
Yeah.
It's a little difficult maybe to come in at the end and.
And, and the other piece is we tried to also then at some point a few years ago, tried to have some national, or, yeah, federal holidays off such as Veterans Day, such as was there MLK and President's Day? And so trying to do some of those also. How about that is something that we can keep in mind for the next calendar? If that would be okay. Cause this is, like I said, we've been working on this for a while and this is what the SEA had proposed and what was extremely similar to what we had proposed.
Because I don't have some history, we know, based on my community recommendation, we moved to having some of those federal holidays off because we have so many federal workers.
Right.
And childcare is an issue. And Easter Monday off would be a childcare issue for a lot of people. There, yes, there are people coming back from trips, but they're also, majority of adults have to work on that day. So that could be kinds of a childcare concern.
No school board meeting on my birthday next year.
All right.
Please.
In that case, we'll have a special meeting.
You guys, you guys vote on the calendar. You guys vote on the calendar. So on that calendar. Okay. So I'll bring that back next month. All right. Next is another item of information that as part of the, the use of these funds, I am required to share this information with the board. So this is the disadvantaged pupil impact aid and the student wellness and success funds. And so these are funds that are earmarked, but they're within the general fund money we get from the state. And so we have to partner with organizations around the area. And so we're partnering with the Green County Educational Service Center, Montgomery County Educational Service Center, and the school-based mental health services at the Green County Educational Service Center. So we received about $170,000 combined for these funds. And most of those funds were in the student wellness and success funds. And so the way we are spending that money, we have to spend it by the end of next fiscal year, so the FY25 fiscal year. We are, and like I mentioned, the school-based mental health services from the ESC, we added two additional days this year. And so that's an additional $42,000. And then next year, we're adding one additional FTE day. So that's an additional $21,000 or so. So that is a little over $100,000 that we're able to use out of these funds. The second half of this school year, we added a part-time counselor at Stephen Bell Elementary. That's just for the second semester of this school year. That cost about $22,000 to provide extra supports for Stephen Bell. That will go away after this school year as we are adding an assistant principal over there for next school year. Obviously, there's, they don't do the same, exactly the same thing, obviously, but an extra person of support over there. And then also a literacy coach from Montgomery County Educational Service Center that has worked with our teachers at Stephen Bell on the implementation of, of science of reading. And that goes along with all dyslexia and the science of reading and literacy and so forth. So we have an excellent coach from Montgomery County ESC that has been working with those teachers on, on implementation of the science of reading and ensuring, and they're doing a fantastic job over there. So that has been a good. So, that has been a good add for this school year. And then also of implementing, continuing the two-way communication systems, or even our, or even our current system where that contract is up and doing that for next year, or looking at a different piece of software, that's Parent Square for next school year. So, and all those amounts are approximate, and we're about at a hundred and seventy thousand dollars there. So, we have until the end of next fiscal year to actually spend all of these dollars. Do any questions about? Okay.
I like that it, it sounds like it directly touches students where possible, so thank you for doing that. It's kind of what, kind of like COVID S.R. funds, you got to spend it on something, and.
Right.
I, I think you did a fantastic job of spending that, and thank you for doing silly things with that money. We're doing it where it actually touches students, so.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, that's it.
Uh, is that it?
Yep.
Anybody have anything else they'd like to mention?
No, I just want to make sure we keep it on our front burner. Mrs. Dorn had mentioned it at the last meeting about the student liaisons to the board. I think that is worth. I just, and I did a little bit of research, like the center of all of those, Northmont, Valley View, so it's in West Groton. So, it is something that is done, so just adding that extra layer of, you know, stakeholder, I think, worth it.
I think it's great, yeah, we, we've reached out, had meetings, I know with, with the union. Been fantastic spending time, we made offers to administrators. You have, I don't know, what, but a board member can meet with student liaison or something, or maybe we can look at options?
Just a break with my other hand.
Yeah, okay.
Not to add anything else to Mr. Hensley.
We can look into that and bring back information at a, a future meeting soon.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. It's important I read what's given to me. So, at this time, I move, that we move to executive session for the purpose of preparing for, conducting, or reviewing negotiations with employees regarding their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment per R.C. one-two-one dot two-two G-four. Does my motion have a second?
Second.
I heard Dr. Pryor. Okay, please call the roll.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yeah.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yeah.
We are in executive session at eighteen. We will take no action whatsoever, but you're welcome to hang around if you want to.
Live? We are out of executive session at 9:48. Would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
Uh-huh.
Mrs. Dorn, seconded by Mrs. Anderson. When you're ready, please call the roll.